I ask everybody to please stand, stay standing so we may salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you would continue to stand, we have two additions that we're going to present here tonight. I'd like to introduce Alicia Smith to be able to sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I'd like to have Leah Kazuko for "God Bless America."
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
You may be seated. I'll ask the clerk to call a roll call of the membership.
Councilor Vido.
President.
Councilor Lopez.
Present.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Present.
Councilor Bishop.
Present.
Councilor Tejada.
Present.
Councilor Vanneta. Councilor Robinson.
Here.
Councilor Perlatonda.
Here.
Councilor Garcia.
Present.
Councilor Ray Coopero.
Here.
We have a call, and we may move on to next business. I'll ask the clerk to call a roll call of the meeting.
The meeting has been requested by senior member Leo Robinson. Special meeting at the City Council for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. The following subject matters: Salute to the flag, roll call of members, oath of office for the Chelsea City Council, election of officers, roll call positions and seating positions, and delegate to the school committee, and any remarks from anyone.
I'll call on Councilor Garcia.
I move to accept the call of the meeting under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, so moved. Minister of the Altive Office. At this time, I'd ask the councils to please rise, and I'll ask the clerk to come administer the Altive Office. Ask everybody to please stand. Hi. Do solemnly swear.
Affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties incumbent upon me as City Council. The City of Chelsea. According to the best of my abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Chelsea. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I'll open up the floor for nominations for the president of council. Do we have a second? I will move to close those nominations, and by name, you will name the president. Clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Vido.
President.
Councilor Lopez.
DeMali Vido.
Councilor Rodriguez.
DeMali Vido.
Councilor Brown.
DeMali Vido.
Councilor Bishop. Councilor Tejada.
DeMali Vido.
Councilor Vanneta absent. Councilor Robinson.
Councilor Vido.
Councilor Perlatonda.
Councilor Vido.
Councilor Garcia.
Councilor Vido.
And Councilor Ray Coopero. Nine members for Councilor Vido, one absent, one present. Councilor Vido is the new president for 2018.
At this time, I'd ask Councilor Bishop and Councilor Garcia to escort the new president to the podium, please.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, DeMali Vido.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the president.
As the president.
Of the Chelsea City Council.
Of the Chelsea City Council.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you. You have no idea how honored I am to be here right now. Before we go any further, I just want to make sure to acknowledge the leadership of our senior member, Councilor Leo Robinson, for his leadership and dedication to public service for decades, literally, and especially for his leadership within the council for the past year. So I'd like to present him with this outgoing plaque. If you would, it might come up here. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for vice president. Chair recognizes Councilor Rodriguez. Do I have a second? Okay. Beautiful, so.
Close nominations.
Yeah.
For vice president by name, please. Councilor Vido.
Calvin Brown.
Councilor Lopez.
Councilor Calvin Brown.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Calvin Brown.
Councilor Brown.
President.
Councilor Bishop.
Councilor Brown.
Councilor Tejada.
Councilor Brown.
Councilor Vanneta absent. Councilor Robinson.
Calvin Brown.
Councilor Perlatonda.
Calvin Brown.
Councilor Garcia.
Calvin Brown.
And Councilor Ray Coopero.
Calvin Brown.
Nine members for Calvin Brown, one absent, one present. Calvin Brown is the new vice president for 2018.
At this time, I'd like to ask Councilor Rodriguez and Councilor Lopez to escort Mr. Brown up to the podium so he can be sworn in, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Calvin Brown.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the vice president.
As the vice president.
Of the Chelsea City Council.
Of the Chelsea City Council.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
My ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to open it up for nominations for the delegate for school committee. Do we have a second? Councilor Coopero, seconds and motion. I would like to close all nominations at this time, and ask the clerk to call a roll.
Councilor Vido.
Councilor Louis Tejada.
Councilor Lopez.
Councilor Louis Tejada.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Louis Tejada.
Councilor Brown.
Councilor Louis Tejada.
Councilor Bishop.
Councilor Tejada.
Councilor Tejada. Councilor Vanneta absent. Councilor Robinson.
Louis Tejada.
Councilor Perlatonda.
Louis Tejada.
Councilor Garcia.
Louis Tejada.
And Councilor Ray Coopero.
Louis Tejada.
Nine votes for Councilor Tejada for delegate to the school committee, one absent, one present. Councilor Tejada is the new delegate to the school committee.
At this time, I'd like to ask my escorts, Rodriguez and Lopez, to please escort Tejada to the podium.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Louis Tejada.
Louis Tejada.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the school delegate.
As the school delegate.
Of the Chelsea School.
Of the Chelsea School.
Committee.
Committee.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chair recognizes Council Bishop.
President, I move that the rules of the 2017 City Council be the rules for the 2018 City Council. Until such time, Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinances meets and recommends the vice.
I'd like to bring up our city manager, Tom Ambrosino, to share some remarks to the city council.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to join in congratulating all of the new counselors, particularly the newest members, and the new leadership. And not just for your ballot victory in this inauguration, but as Representative Ryan said, for your willingness to enter the fray and take on this important, but often thankless job of being a local public official. You know, with all that discord and acrimony that exist at the national level in politics, it's really critically important that politics and public policy actually work well at the local level. And that's especially important in a city like ours in Chelsea, where so many of our residents are foreign-born and often fled from their country because their local system of government was not working in their best interest. So we need to be, and I want us to be, a shining and inspirational example to those residents and all of our residents, that this local government, this city hall, is a place that they can find support, is a place that they can rely upon to be dedicated to improving their lives and the lives of their family. Honestly, there really is no reason for any of us to be in this business of local government service other than to use this privileged position that we have, and it really is a privilege, this privileged position of power and authority to make the lives of our residents here in Chelsea better. And there is a lot that we can do in the next two years together to make their lives better. I certainly have plenty of ideas about policies and programs that I think can, and I hope will, make the lives of residents here in Chelsea better. And I expect to be putting those forward, Madam President, to this council, starting in the next few weeks. And I doubt what I'm going to propose is going to come as any, as a surprise to any who've been paying attention. It will be a continuation of what we've been doing for the last two and a half years, investing, investing in our downtown, investing in our neighborhoods and streets and sidewalks and parks, investing in direct programs for our residents. But I emphasize the word "we" because there's nothing that I can do alone in that office down the hall. I need the support and cooperation of this council. And I've been blessed, in the two-plus years that I've been here, to have a very productive relationship with this legislative body. And I have no doubt, I have no doubt, that the next two years will be an equally collaborative approach. Although we've accomplished a lot in the last two years, there is much more we need to do. I look forward to working with this council. I really feel that the best days of the City of Chelsea lie ahead, and it's my goal to work with all of you over the next two years to ensure that that bright future becomes a reality for all of Chelsea residents. So I congratulate you once again. I look forward to joining you in the very important work that lies ahead. Thank you.
My turn. How's everybody doing? I can't hear you. Good evening and Happy New Year. Of course, I want to acknowledge the Honorable State Representative Daniel Ryan, State Representative Rosalie Vincent, Clerk Magistrate Maura Hannigan, Director of Veteran Services, Francisco Ureña, City Manager, Tam Ambrosino, Superintendent of Schools, Mary Bork, Chief of Police, Brian Kaiser, my colleagues of the city council, and all members of the school committee, past and present, and members of the school department. Honored guests, friends, family, city employees, fellow residents of Chelsea, and of course, those that have contributed to making me, my mother, my husband, and my daughter. It is a privilege to serve this community and an even greater honor to stand before you today as the new president of the Chelsea City Council. Thank you, fellow city council members, for your vote of confidence in me, in my leadership, and to the residents of Chelsea for re-electing me to be your at-large city council member. If I could, I would pay to see the look on the face of 17-year-old DeMali if she could see herself now. Back then, it was 1995, I was a cool kid, not very different from many of the young adults that I come across in our neighborhoods every day. But now it's 2017, and here I am, delivering an inauguration speech as president of the Chelsea City Council. The only difference between then and now is my story of One Chelsea and how it's molded me. I have been open and honest about how street culture sucked me in as a teenager and a young adult, and how I had temporarily lost my way. You also know that my mentors at Roca, my friends, my community, are who led me back on track. Whether it was Officer Jose Torres getting out of his cruiser to check in on me consistently, or Officer Emilio Ramirez making random jokes to connect with me through humor, or then Officer Ifrin Gonzalez slipping drop postings, opportunities in my mailbox. Those small gestures, on their part, reminded me of my worth at a time when I could not see it for myself. Those efforts that represent One Chelsea to me still sit with me 20 years later. I went on to become a youth worker myself and mentor young people who, like me, had lost their way. I took the tools that were demonstrated to me and used it to lift others as I climbed up myself. It was then me making jokes to connect with young people, stopping kids just to say hi and or slipping drop postings whenever I saw them. Those days of youth work and selfless giving back to my community were some of the best days of my life. And every day, I see many of the young folks I work with over the years. They're now parents, students, policemen, teachers, artists. There are many success stories, but there also have been many setbacks, heartbreaks, and honestly, experiences that between us can make us, the best of us, really question who we are as a community. But anyone that knows me or the real Chelsea knows that in spite of statistics and lives lost, we are a community that has taken ownership of our collective agency. This is why Councilor Rodriguez and I have partnered up with other community members to bring forth the Movement League to engage youth positively in the summer. We partnered up with local barbers to bring free back-to-school haircuts for two years in a row. Through these initiatives, I have built genuine relationships with young people, and the goal is simple, to remind them that they matter. The same way Officer Torres, Ramirez, and Gonzalez, I saw Officer Ramirez here earlier. If you're here, can you raise your hand? There he is. Gotta give love where lovers do. The same way that Officer Torres, Ramirez, and Gonzalez reminded me when I needed that reminding, because it's simple. When our youth know that they matter, we are watering their garden. We are investing in their success. That is why I'm so proud to also say that I worked with Chelsea High teacher, Ilana Asher, former school committee member, Robert Pereira, and I'm proud of the work that recreational manager, Salma Taylor, has done in reviving the Chelsea Youth Commission. It is proof of the city council, the city and our council's commitment to support and invest in our future leaders. As an at-large city counselor, the past two years, I have brought forth my commitment to One Chelsea to these chambers, but have also had the honor of sharing this space with colleagues and the passions that they individually bring. Whether it's being a child of immigrants, or carrying the torch of the American dream, making Chelsea your adopted home, or wanting to make your community better for your children or grandchildren, or just your commitment to public service. The point is, we all have different stories that have led us here. We all share different perspectives, expectations, ideas, but I believe wholeheartedly that at the core of our existence is strong love and desire to make Chelsea the best Chelsea it can be. And that is the work that we, my fellow council members, city manager, and residents have ahead. You see, Chelsea is not the parochial town it once was. We are part of the economic boom that has taken hold over the greater Boston region. We have new hotels, FBI buildings, luxury apartments, and the extended silver line coming soon. As your city council president, I look forward to working with my fellow colleagues and other municipalities to ensure that current and future Chelsea residents benefit from the current economic and housing boom that is currently squeezing many of us. It is also my priority to support the creation of more welcoming spaces through art initiatives to protect and preserve the rich history and showcase the immense talent that Chelsea is home to. As Chelsea rediscovers herself, we hope the city master plan we are working toward helps reveal a collective vision for our future. Though pieces of this vision have already been identified through various planning initiatives, a more in-depth and community-based analysis is needed to ensure a more democratic picture of who we are to become. A picture that hopefully frames creative and innovative industries and how to attract trending businesses that will align with our newfound identity. Yet I urge that we remain mindful of the toll that the change in our population is having on existing businesses, and how we can best support our small business community that is the engine of our local economy. And as important as it is for us to address routine concerns that arise, such as potholes, street signs, and trash removal, it is equally important to be proactive on those concerns that can be seen with the naked eye. For instance, Councilor Lopez and I have held multiple discussions with community leaders and residents about a potential plastic bag ban and expanding recycling in the community. As an environmental justice community, we must balance the pressures of a growing city while still preserving and protecting the health of our community. I'm looking forward to the next couple of weeks and sitting with my colleagues, creating a list of our collective priorities for city council for the upcoming year. This process and priority list will be used as a guide to keep us focused on this year's initiatives and address our collective goals. This priority list will create a compass for our city manager of what the concerns of Chelsea residents are and can be used as a tool in evaluating the work of our city manager during his annual review. With transparency at the forefront of our priorities, our communication must improve. How do we utilize the various tools of media to spread the word to as many Chelseaans as possible? If there is a smooth flow of information of projects, initiatives, and events, we can hopefully rebuild the bridge from the people to local government that will bring even more diverse voices to the table. When I first started two years ago, there were a few groups of parents and residents that had complaints about the allocation of our city fields. This group was concerned that the preferential treatment that was given to others was depriving their children of opportunity to participate in recreational activities. We held multiple meetings, city manager established a recreational department, we switched some of the department responsibilities around, came up with rules to protect everyone involved, and now, two years later, thanks to the, I have to acknowledge Bee Cravata, who's sitting back there, thanks to her leadership. Now, two years later, priority is being given to Chelsea residents, and youth and people are content that there was a fair and transparent process and that their voices were heard. See, times are far too crucial for us to sit back and, and, and not participate. Here was a case where there was a concern, we listened, we reevaluated, and came up with a solution. City administration must be better to ensure that we are utilizing all channels to reach and hear from folks, but we as residents also have to take the responsibility to make ourselves available to receive this information and let ourselves be heard. Local government is only as successful as those that participate in it and the work we're willing to put into it. If there is anything that I want people to remember for what I'm sharing today, is to get involved. As the only mother on the council, I hope I'm helping to pave a path to local leadership for other young people, especially young women, immigrants, and mothers of color to get involved in local government. My path here to serve as your city council president wasn't an easy one. I'm not here by accident. It took many bumps in the road, as there wasn't a paved path before my supporters and I paved it for ourselves. That's the Chelsea way. And we didn't pave it so only I could walk on it, but to invite future leaders and every resident to lead so I can pass the torch on to them, remember, lift as you climb. I hope to serve as a reminder to anyone considering a run that to be a leader, you don't have to talk or dress to fulfill a certain role. Contrary to popular belief, the recipe for a leader doesn't consist of predefined pedigrees such as suits and fancy clothes, educational degrees, or tribe. Be in yourself, centered in your values, grounded in your community, passionate, have an integrity, and a willingness to learn all the ingredients you need in order to lead authentically. I'm always honored to serve this unique and diverse community, where our Chelsea school students and families speak 35 different languages, where my neighbors are from every pocket of the world, and my police force are the most diverse in the state. Our talented fire department is home to one of the busiest engines in the United States per capita.